Okay, we'll wait till we have our recording ready.
Ready? Okay. Again, welcome, and I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will. Unfortunately, maybe fortunately, depends on how you look at it, be doing without Lauren today. He had four-way bypass surgery last week and is doing remarkably well. So he's healing, and he won't be with us today. I'm sure he'll be here in thought and we'll be thinking of him. Okay, so the first order here is the approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting on September 15th and the regular meeting on October 6th as presented.
Okay, and I will second that. So we have a motion and a second for the October 6th and 7th and September 15th meetings. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. If you'll bear with us while we do some signing. And our next item is the approval of claims.
I went through and signed the claims, and I'll make a motion that we approve all claims as presented.
Okay, and I'll second that. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. So now we are down to Rick Anderson. Good morning.
Morning. How are you all?
Very well. I've... We'll see as the morning goes along.
Let me get you guys a couple of these.
You grab that for us.
Yes, he's back, yes. I'll give you one for the gentleman who's not here. I talk loud, so I probably don't need a microphone. Can you hear me okay?
Pardon me?
Can you hear me okay?
Can.
Okay. Good. She was working on the microphone, so.
Oh, it's running.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, so I'll move up a little bit. Ricky Anderson with Vergey. We do guaranteed energy savings projects. I was here probably, oh God, three, four years ago, I think.
Yeah.
It was COVID and the whole stuff, so it really didn't go anyplace, but... So we do guaranteed energy savings projects. What we do, what we look at, the first page that I gave you in your handout, we look at anything that's sucking up utilities. So I don't know how familiar you are with the utility situation in Indiana. It's not very good. We're a regulated, we're a regulated state, which means we are stuck with the utility company that we're stuck with. We don't have choices. All the states around us, Ohio, Michigan, Illinois, you have choices on who to buy utilities from.
Right. The states around us have a choice of which utility they buy?
They do. Ohio, Michigan, Indiana, you have multiple choices. In Indiana, you have geographically where you sit. So you're good here, correct?
Pardon me?
Most of Carroll County, Duke, or...
We have RMC and we have Duke.
Okay.
Nipco.
You got a little bit of Nipco?
Little bit of Nipco.
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah, we get outside. But so you're stuck with those utilities. So good news, good news, bad news for you guys, but good for us because the rates just keep going through the, through the roof. The average rate increase in Indiana over the past 15 years has been 6%. Probably over the past three to five years, it's been more like in the 15, 18, 20%. You've probably noticed this at home, or if you pay utilities for a business that you're involved with, you'd notice a high increase. So what we try to help you do through our programs is get a little bit more energy independent. So you're never going to be totally able to get off the utility totally, but we're trying to help you by some of the programs that we do, get off the utility, be more energy independent. So the first page that I gave you are the things that we look at, really anything that's utilizing utilities, so lights, HVAC. We do quite a bit of solar. We don't do the big farm field stuff. We, all of our stuff is associated with a facility or a meter, okay? We don't, we don't do the big 300, 500, 1,000 acre fields out in the middle of farm fields. So the first page I gave you kind of shows you what we look at when we look at programs. Second page, there was something passed a couple of years ago called the Inflation Reduction Act. What it basically allows you guys to do on some of these programs is to get back a 30% check from the federal government. So anything solar, geothermal, which is a potential here with some of your systems, we might be able to get you back 30% on your investment, but we don't know that until we do any kind of an assessment, okay? So I also gave you a couple of case histories there on a couple of counties that we've worked on, both Dearborn County and also Hamilton County. But we are specializing right now in courthouse redos. So I'm doing a courthouse redo down in Ripley County right now, down in Forsales, Indiana. We went through the whole courthouse. It's one of the oldest courthouses in the state.
How old is that thing?
1865. But we went through and did lights, HVAC, a new sprinkler system. It was a pretty, pretty involved situation, but I'm also looking at redos at Clay County, Scott County. It's something that we're doing quite a bit of because of these older courthouses. So the next step would be doing an assessment. The assessment doesn't cost anything for the county to do. I come in with my engineers. I get your billing information, but I come in with my engineers and we walk your facilities. So your main facilities would be here. I know you have a newer jail, but solar at the jail might make a lot of sense because that's your biggest utility user. That's probably, if I ranked your, your bills, the jail would be the highest because it's 24/7/365. But we'd come in and do an assessment. The one thing I forgot to mention, which, which your lawyer would probably be interested in, there's, there's guaranteed savings legislation, IC-36-1-12.5. That's what allows you guys to go out and do these projects via an RFQ or an RFP. The legislation's been out there about 30 years, but normally the attorney, the attorneys like to know about, about that, so. But we come in and do the assessment. So we would come in, again, the assessment would cost nothing for the county to do. I'd get your billing information, I'd bring an engineer in, and we'd walk your facilities. We'd come back to you with recommendations. At that point, you can move forward with something. You can say, Rick, thank you so much. Appreciate your efforts. That, that assessment, if you hired an architect or engineer to do that, it'd probably be $50,000 to $100,000. But we come through and do that for you. We call it kind of a cost of doing business. So, pretty simple.
What do you think, Scott?
Well, I guess I've got a question. You're stating all the percentage increases we've seen over the past decade or so.
Yes.
Where's our IURC in all of this?
I have a gentleman with me, Cole Willis, and Cole used to work for AES down in Indianapolis. Would you like to answer that?
Yeah, absolutely. Good morning. Like Rick said, I worked for like a utility for almost 14 years, working with our large commercial customers, county, city of Indianapolis and Marion County. You know, I think there's a number of things, I think you're seeing from a federal perspective and state perspective. You're seeing influence to try and get utilities to move to more renewable energy and away from coal-fired energy. You see one administration moving that way really pretty strongly. You see another administration going the different way. You're kind of getting this tug of war back and forth, and I think customers in the state of Indiana particularly are stuck in between. So like anything else, if we're making an investment in one, and we turn around a couple, four, eight years later, we decide to go in a different direction, it's really expensive. So I think the IURC is in a similar position. They're getting a different direction. That's usually a government-appointed position. So you're seeing, you know, you're seeing one administration giving one input, you're seeing another administration going the other way. There's just a lot of loss of efficiencies and a lot of cost incurred. There's basic costs that a utility need to take on, right? They need to trim trees, they need to maintain their lines, but you're seeing pressure from larger government that's really kind of requiring them to take additional action, and then our customers are stuck in between. And so that, that's my take on it. Like I said, you know, that's been the case for the last several years. Rick talked about the increases. We just saw new rate cases from Duke, Nipco, AES Indiana, and that's just going to be, continue to be the trend for the next probably 10 to 15 years, given the signal we see from utilities across the state.
But what, what we're, that energy dependence that I talked about before, if you can get off of them as much as you can, that's what we're really trying to help you do with our projects. So like I use, we're doing a lot of wastewater solar, wastewater in a lot of communities. In fact, I had a meeting with the mayor on Friday. We're going to go back to city council and talk to them about that. But wastewater is 75 or 80%. So if I can offset, you know, 25 to 50% of your bill, but it's the same conversation I'd have with you with your jail. So your jail, if I could offset 25 to 50% of your utility bill with solar out there, that's the kind of stuff that you want to look at to, to again, be as independent as you can and get off the utility as much as you can. Take, take this under control as much as you can, guys, because, because it's going to get uglier. It's going to get worse. Because the coal, we are coal, we are like fifth, fifth dependent coal plants in the country because of the electric coal situation. That's not going to get any better. But you guys can do something about it if you look at one of these projects.
Mr. Sheriff, Clint County did one of these a number of years ago. It was $5 million project on, on courthouse. It was partially financed by, from Building Security Fund, and they got private investors of the banks invested in it. It's a project that went real well. It saved a lot of money. I don't, I don't, I think they're, they're a good deal. The only question that was back then was the auditing for purposes of proving to the state that you saved.
The state makes us do, every year we have to do, we get your bills. So we'd get, if we get a project under contract, there's a commissioning period of a year, but then after that next year, I would have to get bills from you guys. I have to fill out a form, and if I say, I, if I was, said I was going to save you a dollar and I only save you 90 cents, I have to write you a check. So that, every year, that's audited by the state of Indiana.
So that hasn't changed from the statute that we had, I think it was the 95 that our project.
Yeah, legislation's been around 30 years.
Yeah, I know it. But I, my concern was, because there were some alarm amongst the municipal law community and cities and towns. These were more school.
Right. We knew a lot of K-12, yeah.
Yeah, they were more school projects, and it was less of a savings kind of for, for the, for the counties and local governments at, at that time. And, and there was real concern, the state was going to be focusing on the audit part of it to make sure that you actually got what you paid for. So you do the auditing yourself?
We have, we have what's called a measurement and verification, yes.
So that's all done in-house?
Correct.
Okay, so we don't have to hire somebody else to do that?
You don't.
Okay, that's the only question I have. So the, the assessment is free, is what you're saying? No obligation?
Correct.
Okay.
I need a little help from you guys on getting billing information, but that's like a, a letter of authorization that allows me to go to the utilities.
Do you think the higher dollar return for the county is going to be the solar jail?
Well, it could be, but, but in, in this particular building, I call it, you have to look at this thing as energy and operational savings, but also infrastructure improvement as well. A lot of the county courthouses that are getting redone, they got these old facilities that I've, I've got to, so there's going to be some savings there, but it's really going to be some on the operational side. That we were going to have to replace boilers and chillers and windows and all that kind of stuff at some point anyway.
Yeah. Well, in Clint County, I think the windows did a lot for it.
Right.
And I don't recall what other components of their system produced the yield. What, in a building of this size, what, what components do you think?
So the interesting thing about the IRA that I talked about, so that 30% that you get back potentially from a project, if I could potentially do a geothermal project here, which we've done in a bunch of different places, I can get you 30% back on your investment on that geothermal portion. So you, let's just use round numbers. I do a million-dollar project, I get you a check back from the federal government for $300,000.
And that doesn't make it a difference that it's a governmental unit, it costs to governmental as well as.
Exactly. Yes, sir. Again, I don't, I don't know any of this until I do the assessment. I mean, that's when I come back with the recommendations and the cash flows and things to say, hey, guys, here's a potential project. You can either do all of it, you can do some of it, but it has to make sense to you guys, obviously, so.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Good question.
All right, Scott?
Well, I don't know. Is this something that we should consider now with the absence of our number three commissioner? Or, I mean, as far as, as far as I'm looking at it, if the assessment is, is free, I mean, you know, I look beyond that and the cost of the project and any upgrades we have to do to windows or boilers or, you know, exchangers or anything like that is probably going to be astronomical, I would imagine. But as far as the assessment goes, it'd be interesting to see, see the numbers, you know? And I concur. I, I don't, I don't see any drop, you know, with as many things that are going in. I don't see any drop in, in utilities, you know, the supply of utilities increasing to where, you know, supply and demand dictates prices come down. So, I mean, I would be in, in favor of considering the assessment part of it. I think it'll be a whole different story when we look at what's it going to take to get it done.
And I would, I think, concur with you that I don't want to... The assessment is one part, but I don't want to sign for the county to do more than that without Lawrence' input. I want to concur.
The assessment's going to take us about six weeks to two months to get done, so again...
You'll probably be back by then.
Yeah, so, so again, you're not, you're not contractually obligating yourself to anything. Like I told you, we'll get the assessment done. You then guys decide, hey, do we want to move forward after the assessment or do we not? And that's going to take a couple of months to get you the information back, so.
Okay. Well, I would entertain a motion if you wanted to make one, Scott.
I'll make a motion that we have Vergey perform the assessment on, with Carroll County on utility usage. Pardon? I said I would make a motion that we, we request Vergey to perform the assessment with Carroll County, considering utility usage.
I would second that and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes, sir.
Would that include the manor?
I would think.
Any county facilities, yeah. So I'll get a, I'll get a list of your county facilities and we'll look at anything that you're handling, so.
The first thing that pops into my mind is the jail, but of course, it's brand new. I don't know how, unless we would go with solar or something like that out there, I don't see how we're gonna... We shouldn't have things there that need to be redone.
It's only a couple of years old.
The manor is a very good point to bring up because it's an older home that we have that... I kind of hate to even think about what all it might have, might take to do that.
Yeah, we'd look at, we'd look at that, absolutely. Correct. Any county facilities, yes.
Okay, so we'd like for you to go ahead with it.
Thank you. I'll get, I'll get some information to you as far as some letter of authorization. It's just to get billing, billing information, so. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Always working with you on this.
Thank you.
Our next up is Hunter Alderman. Is Hunter out there? There he is. Hiding back there, Hunter. What can you inform us on, on the highway department?
Only update I have is we'll start sidewinding Monday. They put us back this week. We're supposed to have it this week, but they're still working on that project, so we won't get the sidewinder until Monday, so we'll start sidewinding.
Do you remove the sod from the side before you lay that down, or do you just lay stone over the top?
We just lay stone over the top of it.
Okay.
Yep, we just lay stone over the top of it. And I was wrong last time. It is 950, not 900, that we're starting on first. I told you, we're starting on 900. It's 950 north is what we're going to start on and then go to 300 south.
Okay.
And about the tree hanging over Adams Mill Bridge, I have a contractor meeting us down there today to, to see what it's going to take to take it down.
Good, because I've gotten three or four more calls on it since I talked to you.
He's supposed to be meeting us down there today around 11:30, so hopefully we can get something figured out and that gets taken down within a few days, hopefully.
Okay. There's going to be a lot of people unhappy with me if that tree goes down.
Oh, no, that's going to be unhappy for me because that's going to be a big headache if it goes on the bridge. So we'll see if we can't get it taken down within the next week or so.
Okay, sounds good. You have anything for them?
I don't believe so.
Anybody out here have anything to bring up to the highway department? Thank you, Hunter. So we are down now to Spencer Kingry. Mr. King, Deputy Kingry, excuse me, Officer Kingry. I got to see some of your drones flying around out here.
Yes, we sure did.
Thank you, Ted.
So I'm here to talk about our drone program. So our drone program started in 2024. Our first drone pilot was Detective Darren G. Nicola. Myself and Deputy Corey Baines completed a pilot program this year as well. So we have three certified pilots through the FAA for drone operations, Part 107 licensing. Our first use of our drone program was in 2024. Our most notable was during the trial that we had here. Our first drone itself was a DJI Mavic 3T, which is a thermal drone. It was donated anonymously to the sheriff's department. And again, our first pilot was Detective Darren G. Nicola. So some of the uses that we have for our drone, I'll just do a little PowerPoint for you guys if you want to, but you don't have to if you don't want to. So the biggest thing is that we use it to find people. We've located missing juveniles, which Detective Gina Colican attests to recent findings. We locate, we can locate elderly, we locate lost adults, we can locate mentally disabled folks, we can locate suspects of a crime, and most importantly, we can save lives. That is a big, big part of it. Another thing that we can do is assist with crime scene photography and videography. We basically can photograph crime scenes, photograph crash scenes, we can photograph disaster areas if something, if that were to happen, hopefully not. We can gather information to help with crime scene reconstruction total, and we can also gather information to help with crash, crash, crash scene reconstruction. So basically, we gather photographs and data from the drone, and we actually will send it off to someone that can interpret that data and make this huge collage of a crash scene. Currently, we don't have the licensing to do the, the interpretation of that data because it is an expensive license to have, so we rely on like Purdy or Cass County, or actually Clint County is getting ready to have that program as well. Another thing that we use the drones for is we assist in law enforcement operations. Drones can help take place, officers holding perimeters on a certain area if we're using operations. Drones are able to see more from an overhead view, so we have a bigger visual of what's going on. Drones can help track down suspects that may flee from us. Drones can help aid in the service of search warrants or arrest warrants. Drones can be sent to areas that could help alleviate the risks to law enforcement or K9s or anybody else in the area. Drones can also add in tracking apprehension of suspect with the K9 team. So we can work together with K9 teams or tactical teams to track and apprehend suspects. Some of the training that we have acquired through the last two years, all three of us went through the Public Safety UAS 107 prep course, which is to help us get our FAA license. Our, we've also recently went to Evansville for our Tactical Drone Operations class, and Detective Gina Colican just recently went to a search and rescue class up in Elkhart?
Lepore.
Lepore, Indiana. So the big, the big kind of reason why I'm here is the funding part of it. Right, right now, there's no current line item for our drone projects and/or any usage of it. We rely on donations from the community. Currently, we've had two donations through both the Carol White RMC grant and also Camp Tecumseh just recently donated as well to us. Say what? Good. All right. So some, the drones that we are requesting assistance as, we're looking at it, DJI Matrice 14 Public Safety Bundle. I attached a quote in with this PowerPoint presentation. Basically, this is the next generation above the Mavic 3T that we have. They don't make parts for the 3T. We only have one 3T for three pilots. And basically, we're, we're requesting the assistance of getting other drones, so that way each of our operators have one, and then there's also redundancy in the program as well. So if our drone were to go down, we have another one there ready to go. The Mavic, the Matrice 14 has laser range finding, better cameras, better battery light, and actually, it would be pretty on par with the cost of the 3T nowadays if we were to have a 3T ranging come out. And then the next one that we're looking at is called the DJI Abada 2. The Abada 2 is basically, we would utilize that as an interior drone, so we can actually go into buildings, rubble piles and stuff like that to be able to view what's in there. That one is not a thermal drone, so.
Yeah, what is known what?
A thermal drone. There's no IR sensors into that one. So with the Matrice 14, it also has infrared, so we can be able to see a heat signature at night and stuff like that. So why do we need the drones? Currently, DJI is no longer in production with the 3T. They're not replacing them. We only have the one drone for three operators. Drones at... Okay. Okay. We only have the one drone for three operators. Drones stay at the sheriff's office, so if we were to be called out, we have to go to the sheriff's office from wherever we're at to go get it and then come out. If a drone does go down, we don't have any other ones right now for our office to use. We would have to request assistance of outside agencies, whether it be MA, Delphi, any other place. The goal is to place a drone in each pilot's vehicle, improving the efficiency, response times, and we can get more than one responding drone to the scene if we need to. There have been multiple times where there's been a delay in response or even no response because a drone's been down, already utilized somewhere else, not available. So that's one of the big things that we have. And have Detective Gina Colican come up if he wants to explain a recent scenario for locating a juvenile. Again, Darren G. Colican, Detective Sheriff's Office. So like Spencer was saying...
So like Spencer was saying, the redundancy is kinda why we need more drones. When I went to training in Lepore, I left on a Sunday because class started early Monday morning. That Sunday night, they needed a drone. So we had to rely on an outside agency because I had our one drone. So for an example of its uses, the, the thermal imaging on these drones is like, it's, it's incredible. The juvenile that was missing in Tipnew County for almost fourteen hours, he was deaf and autistic. He was missing for almost fourteen hours when I got there. And I put up a thermal imaging drone and found him in eighteen minutes. So, and he was, he had more or less built a playground next to I sixty-five. His, he's an autistic person. He doesn't understand being lost, so it was fun to him. But he had been missing fourteen hours in August at night. They couldn't find him with a helicopter with FLIR, but I found him in eighteen minutes with a drone with infrared. So that's an application that I don't think you can put a value on that when you're saving a life. You know, we, we used them for, I found a gentleman that fled a crash scene this winter. It was like twenty degrees outside and he was intoxicated and had just been in a violent crash. And he had fled the scene because he was intoxicated. But what did he have shirt, a t-shirt and pants on?
T-shirt, pants, and it was like thirty seven degrees outside.
Yeah, I put the drone up and found him. It took me longer to set up my settings than it took to find this individual. So not only did we get this guy in custody, but if we wouldn't have found him and he was on foot with no cellphone and thirty degrees with a t-shirt on, that's, that's a potential life scenario there too. So they're, they're more or less invaluable. And right now, the drone that we have, it's a thermal imaging drone. They don't make it anymore. The, the ones we're looking at replacing it with are more or less that version, just newer. And there's no other cheaper option from DJI for thermal imaging. We, we just need to get them in, in each pilot's car so there's no delay. Because minutes, minutes are everything when it's talking about saving a life, so.
Something to comparison, so the reason why we're hard upon DJI is because their camera quality, their thermal imaging is by far the best in the industry right now. Unfortunately, American technology and drone manufacturing is not caught up yet. We've looked at grants, however grants want to use American-made products. And they're just not there yet. The thermal imaging capability is not there yet for the price. Otherwise, the price just goes up with American-made products. I understand like most people are like, oh, why, why American-made? Well, we also wanna make sure we're doing cost efficiency and the best profit we can get with that. So DJI is by far the best name right now in drone industry and they're everywhere. Again, best camera, best battery life right now. Cost efficiency is just there for them.
There's just, there's just so many applications we can use them for. Spencer flew over the weekend for the stuff that was downtown. He's able to not be anywhere near it and have overwatch of the situation. Unfortunately, nowadays, just officer presence can, can intimidate people or create an issue. So he was able to monitor that, that downtown scene from a distance where people probably had no idea that it was being monitored. But we can ensure safety without having to be directly there and causing an issue with people being upset that the police are at a, at an event or something like that. So there's a thousand applications. I could, I could talk all day about the amount of applications that we can use them for. But like what Sergeant Kingery said was, so like Skydio is a American drone company. A Skydio thermal drone would cost over twenty thousand dollars for one compared to about, what are they? About nine thousand for the?
Eight, eight thousand dollars for the public safety package. So that's four batteries, round box, chargers, controller and like miscellaneous prompts and stuff like that in case the prompt should be damaged.
So we're looking at eight thousand per, per bird?
Yes, and then the Avada is around twelve hundred dollars. Again, once you tack on thermal camera, you're jumping the price to five thousand dollars.
Okay.
So the Avada is roughly between twelve and thirteen hundred dollars depending on.
Roughly?
Roughly twelve hundred to thirteen hundred dollars for the Avada two. That's the interior drone that I was talking about. It does not have IR capabilities.
Yeah, the, the interior drone is, is a, it's a tactic that's been using, been used for a while by some agencies that could afford them in the past. But it's just another officer safety scenario where it's one of those, why, if there's a danger inside a building, why send officers in first when we can send an inanimate object that can live stream back to the officers? So if we think we have an armed barricaded person, why would we put a person in the house?
Or an owl.
Yeah, or we could put a, you know, dogs have their purposes, a hundred percent. But if you can put a drone in a house and you see an armed suspect and he injures your drone or knocks your drone out of there, that's different than putting an officer in there, so. But those, those are the interior ones. Those are, those are much more affordable. They're the, the small ones that I think you can see on here.
Those like the last page, just taking the last page.
So your total request amounts to what, John?
So the total request that I'm looking for is sixteen thousand right now. And that's the purchase of the.
Sixteen thousand even?
Yeah, sixteen thousand. That is to the both Matrice four T packages. We're utilizing some of their funding to help with their body too. I mean, if you wanna give us the money for their body too, I'm not gonna say no. Sorry.
How many? I know emergency management has two, is that correct?
Correct, so Mike actually utilizes two all-tel drones. Their thermal imaging is not the same as DJI. The DJI one again, the thermal imaging and IR capabilities, the DJI cameras are way better. Mike was able to, I believe, get a grant for those, if I, if I recall correctly. And that's an American-made company. But they're, his big drone, which is the equivalent of the Matrice four T that we, that we're requesting. The IR is not as good. The battery life is not as good, but it almost costs, I think it actually costs more than the Matrice four T package itself or his package that he got. So again, we're looking at the, what we can get best for the buck that we can get. And, and the drone community, DJI is where it's at.
How many are in the county? Any idea?
We have two for EMA and then DPD has one.
Okay.
And then we have one.
You have two and two, where are the other?
So two for EMA for Mike. Mike's really not supposed to be using it for law enforcement purposes. He's supposed to be using it for disaster, EMA's stuff. Delphi PD has one right now. And he actually went through the same program, both Deputy Baines, sorry, Deputy Baines, Detective Gina Colican, myself went through, just Darren went through it first.
Yeah, so, so we have, we have one, Delphi has one and EMA has two.
Correct.
Delphi's gonna have themselves in the same scenario when they have an issue with theirs and they just won't have, they won't have any, which we'd already experienced an issue during the Allen trial. We had an issue with our drone. Luckily, I had some contacts that could send me a loner to get through that process because it took almost two months to get our original drone back from service.
How big is this drone?
Uh, the Matrice four T, I mean, I don't have it with me, I mean.
Not like that?
Yeah. They fold out, so they fold, they fold together compact, maybe, maybe about yay big. And they have the arms folded out, so they fit in a Pelican case.
Yep.
And that's one of the main reasons why we're, we would like these is so they can fit in a patrol car without taking up a bunch of space.
How fast do they fly?
So the Matrice, I believe, is twenty-seven miles an hour, if not a little bit more than that.
Mine will do almost fifty.
So, yeah, it depends on, because there's sport, there's.
What did you just say?
Mine, mine will do almost fifty, but that's in a setting that, yeah, you would never have any realistic scenario of using, unless you're tailing a vehicle. But you don't search an area at fifty miles an hour, if that makes sense.
Yeah. There's, there's different settings. There's like, they call it sport mode. So it's like in a car, you know, you have eco moves. You can have eco mode or sport mode or cinematic mode because these are picture drones. The sport mode just basically takes all brackers off and you can just go fly with them. The Matrice will do more than twenty-seven, which is the average for the normal, for the normal mode.
I know with, I know with anything that involves technology, you know, within two or three years, it'll be outdated, but as long as it still does what we need it to do, it's kind of a moot point.
So the Matrice, like I said, the reason why we're, we're looking at the Matrice is because A, the cost efficiency with it and then B, it's the newer model. So we're gonna have several years out of it. Whereas with the three T, they stopped production on it, it's harder to get play, uh, parts for it if it were to go down. So it's kinda like an iPhone. Every couple, you know, every year, there's a new, some sort of new version that comes out and they service the old one for so long and then it's, then it's obsolete. And that's the same thing. Drones get firmware updates, so after so long, the next off.
I was just gonna ask about updates that, you know, because the, the mechanics of the drone are not gonna change probably.
Fairly.
But it's the, it's the brains, the.
The software inside the drone.
Software updates and that type of thing.
I asked how fast it would go because I was amazed at how fast when it went over here. Whatever day it was, we had to thing out here on a courthouse where not, not the No Kings, but the one before that, I didn't go to the No Kings.
So I, I flew that one and it was, I didn't fly over twenty-five miles an hour for that one.
Was the other one the City of Delphi that was up here?
Yep.
Okay, and I, I guess while we're on the same, the same vein, same, not necessarily the same talking point. As far as your K-9, how is that project coming?
I'd have to defer back to Sheriff Colican for the finances on that. I, I don't know exactly everything on that yet.
Okay.
So that's something.
Which program? The K-9 program? Yeah, we're, we're still getting requesting donations. We're not ready to, we're not in a moment we can purchase yet.
Okay. How close are we?
I would feel comfortable at about another nine thousand dollars because our entire K-9 program is donation funded.
Right.
So I think right now we have sixteen thousand dollars in, in the fund. It costs fifteen to get the dog to train. Well, if any of our dogs get hurt, vet care, things like that, food. So we need to build up just a little bit more.
Have some cushion.
So we don't lose a zero, yeah.
I saw last night, this is just a sideline, where a guy had one of these strapped on him. Looked like market-ready pig. Took off and flew the pig around when he was hanging from the bottom of the drone. That was pretty interesting.
Yeah, DJI actually makes.
Dear recover.
Well, they, they make drones that are used for like third world country for delivering and they, their payload capacity, they actually used them with the floods that shut down communities down south last year. They deliver water and medical supplies and stuff like that because roads would close down. But yeah, it's pretty interesting. They, they make some that have a payload capacity of like five hundred pounds. So this is nothing like that, but.
Can it? You just brought this up. Could it drop? Does it have the, a capacity to drop anything out of it?
Yes, sir. So it would be, it would be an attachment we'd have to purchase. The current drone we have now, it's, it's, it's possible to do it. It's technically not payload rated, but the Matrice four, it's something that we've looked into. After I went through my search and rescue school, they make a thing called a ready tube. They're like forty dollars, but you could drop it to someone in water and it'll deploy like a, a lifesaving like tube. You could tow a rope with it out to someone if you had to help fire, if you had someone stranded in a flood condition or something like that. But yeah, the, the Matrice four is actually built to take something small, you know, flashlight, med kit, beacon, ready tube, life jacket, rope, things like that.
I was thinking about water rescues.
Yes, that's the main, that's the main reason we were interested in them is we have lots of water here in Carroll County, obviously, but you could drop this thing called a ready tube and to someone that was maybe stranded or tow a rope to them or something like that.
Well, what do you think, Scott?
I, I definitely think that, that these are a necessity to the performance of, of our deputies and, and our emergency personnel. I would make a motion that we approve the purchase of the drone, drones, plural, right?
Drones for the, like I said, the, the ones that we're requesting.
Yeah, the sixteen thousand. And I would suggest that we take a look at utilizing edit funds in doing so.
So you're gonna suggest to the council that they use edit funds for the sixteen thousand?
Correct. Mm-hmm.
amend the twenty twenty-five that we have or put it on the twenty twenty-six? I just wanted to verify.
How soon do you need them?
Uh, the sooner the better because of supply and demand. Tariffs.
And. Yeah, I know.
The, the importing of stuff is kind of, you know, being kind of restricted. So the longer wait, the price goes up and availability goes up, or goes down, I should say.
So given that, I would amend twenty twenty-five edit.
I will second that motion and call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. We appreciate it, gentlemen, and.
Thank you, sirs.
Well, these days, I wanna see that thing fly.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I wanna be around it.
You'll be impressed, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on our agenda here, we have two items. Should we add that in at the bottom here since it's out of last year, but we're still?
No, this, this is separate.
Pardon me?
We can put this separately in the court consensus twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
These are the twenty twenty-six edit requests that you have received. There is another one that could be put on there was Paul Ryder stood up and asked for thirty thousand, but I didn't have any information primarily. He said for Carol Manor, he's just stated it in.
Twenty for Carol Manor.
Yeah, thirty for Carol Manor.
Thirty for Carol Manor. That's, should go on here with the other two, right?
Yes.
Okay, so. Do you have all your numbers for edit there?
Yeah, I believe so.
You should have a folder there.
Pardon me?
You should have your folder there.
In my folder?
They're not that far, but your edit folder is.
Yeah, but I don't know what I did with my edit. Here we go, here we go. I put it where it's supposed to be, no wonder I couldn't find it. Do you have a list there?
Yeah, the requests.
That list that you have is just from the, the original ones here. This is what you have talked about. But then you were adding some on. You haven't added anything. You just had them present them to you.
Right.
And then there's two out here that you should present today, or no, Ross has already presented, and the recorder wants to present something too.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And I was informed that there may be some edit possibilities for the, um, owner occupied rehabilitation. We'd spoken about that earlier in the year, and so I was requesting, um, it's a percentage match grant through the state, and I'm requesting $40,000.
Forty.
In edit, um, that would take us to $400,000 worth of money that we could use to help repair, um, owner occupied housing, um, repair roofs, put in, um, ramps, that kind of thing, air conditioning, heating, um, whatever. It's, uh, income-based, so it'd be lower income families, um, veterans. And I've been working through, uh, curpsy to help get this grant, but I needed to have our, uh, finances okayed before I, we can move forward.
Okay, so what does a homeowner have to do to get into this?
There'll be an application process, and, um, that's something that we'll design, and you guys can have input on what you're thinking that, um, needs to be on the application process. Right now, obviously, it would be, uh, the income, it's basically what the HUD income requirements are. We could say, you know, the income, we want veterans, we, we want single parent homes, um, we can limit however we want. I honestly have no idea how many people will apply, um, I'm hoping it's, you know, a lot, but I don't know. It's, I don't think the county's ever done it, the City of Delphi's done it before, and they had a good reception. Um, the $40,000 is not something that, you know, it, it's a do or die, it's just the amount I came up with that I thought the, um, $400,000 could help a lot of people. If you wanted to do a lesser amount, I mean, I'm grateful for anything.
So it's a, it's a 10%, so if we did 20, then it would be a $200,000 total limit?
Correct.
Available?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is this, is this something that falls on the recorder's shoulders to do? Is just something that you came up with?
Just something to help the citizens, yep.
Okay, how did you find out about curpsy having this available?
I did some digging. I, I get emails from the state about, uh, different programs that come through, and I read about it, thought it was a good idea, started doing some digging on what you needed to do and how you needed to do it to, to get the finances. And, um, that's when I came across curpsy, who said, yeah, they've worked with us, um, I've heard them mentioned in meetings before. I don't know, I know that, um, uh, Ms. Martin had made a comment maybe last year about, she had asked how many offices had used curpsy, and I think there was several, two or three of them that had used them. So that's how I found out.
Okay.
And I, I don't know what the future is, I don't know what the new budget meetings have brought up about using them. Still, I'm hoping that they will, because they're, they will, they will do a lot of the, and the groundwork for this. We'll just, and me, on my office, I will just kind of like navigate it.
I know that Camden has done this or something similar before, and Delphi has. Seems like Flora has, but I don't know that for sure, but I don't think we've ever done it for outside of the incorporated areas, certainly there are a lot of houses outside of that that could use, well, houses in Pittsburgh, or houses in Rockfield, or houses in Cutler, or. We will put this on the list and see what we can figure out here as far as, yes, yes.
I just wondered how much normally do we go for a household, like 10,000, 5,000, or how many people could you go?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Well, um, that, I, I don't know the specific answer, um, the last, when we came before you earlier in the year, they were thinking that the two, I think it was $250,000 would help like five families. I don't know, I think that's a low number, I think you can do more, but that was what curpsy came up with, with their information that they've had from other projects, which they would have probably a better understanding, obviously, than I would. And it also depends on what they need done, you know, if you need a ramp bill, or you need a new roof, that, you know, all those are different, different costs.
Do we have to have curpsy do some kind of an income survey in the county to, uh, to do this?
I don't know about an income survey, I just know that they will put out the information that if anybody is interested in participating in something like this, uh, let us know, and then there'll be an application process that they need to fill out, and what they need, how many people are in their households. So I don't know if that's what you mean, um, I don't think that they will do a full in-depth.
Okay.
I think it'd probably be on an individual basis, once the application's received.
Yes.
Well, see, I'm, I'm not well-known to this, like most things, but, uh, that I'm not, but I can remember Camden having to do an income survey, and so many people had to be below a certain threshold for them to get the grant, so.
There, there are, um, qualifications you have to meet to get it, but we've already been through that process. Um, when I brought this to you guys earlier in the year, and so we're at the money, money part. They already said that we can apply for the grant, we just need to go ahead.
Okay. Okay. Well, Scott and I have a little work here to do to figure out what we're gonna.
Okay.
Appreciate your.
All right, yep.
Bringing it to us, and also your concern for the homeowners out here that could help get some help.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you. What we need to do is have a total list of every, of every, um, request, and also a list of available funds. I don't know that I have that one here in my folder. Unless it's stuck on the one of these others. Do you have it?
Something like that.
I'm not sure I have it too, but. There we go.
That's one, so I will need it back.
You'll need this back.
But we can just copy it and put it back.
Okay, so far we have, uh, Economic Development for, has requested $183,833. Burlington Community Club has requested $3,000. Carroll County Chamber of Commerce has requested $95,000. Flora Community Club has requested 10,000. Carroll County Senior and Family Services have requested $20,000. The jail has requested 149,000.
That's them.
Huh?
That's the old jail.
Oh, that's the old jail for, okay, okay.
That's the mold remediation, and that was edit and rainy day.
Either or.
Either or, right.
Fairgrounds have requested 145,000 for a new restroom. Ross Brown requested $20,000 for Cutler. Carol Manor has requested 30,000. And we just got a request for $40,000.
I believe the 4H was 140,000.
What?
One four.
I was just thinking it was 140.
140, mm-hmm.
For the fair? So I cut mine by 5,000 here, right? Okay, I'm just going off of Lauren's figures here. Yep, time to do some total in here. There are certainly a lot of things here that are good projects. Oh, you just wanted to put 16,000 on there for the, um.
That's from the 2025.
That's.
Oh, so that doesn't count into this one, okay, okay, okay. Well, now, that's something I would like to know, is how much money is there back?
I didn't look that hard up, I mean, I know you've got over $2 million, I think, in there.
How much?
I think there's over 2 million in there.
Really?
I can't think on that, but you got, you're coming in 2026, you're getting 635,000 for next year, and we get it every, monthly, we don't get it all at one time.
Okay, so, let's say, uh, let's pick out, say, old jail, 149,000. So we get it monthly, how do they get it? How, how do, how do we get it to pay for the old jail?
They turn in a claim with their bills, and we pay them directly.
Per month, or?
No, we've got, we've got a buildup of almost, I know it was over 1 million.
Okay, so it can be paid out of that?
Yeah.
All right, good. Where'd you come up with, Scott?
690,833. 833.
32.
833. So if you, if you take, so that's 311 plus the extra ones that just today?
It's, it's the, yeah, the 311 plus the 149, the 20, um, for Cutler, 30 for the Manor, 40 for owner occupied, and 140 for the fairgrounds.
Okay. Now, because we put it on the list does not mean that's what we're gonna get, because it has to go through the council too, for approval. But the council can't add to it after we put it in, can they?
Can they add to it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
It has to come from you, and then they go to them for approval. I haven't, I have not advertised any of these, because none of them have been approved, so you've gotta do your approvals.
So I guess a question that I have for you, Scott, is we, what we, what you have done there for us is to just add all the requests.
Right.
Are you comfortable with all of the requests?
I, I am not, um, and I think I'll start with, uh, the original request up at, um, up at the top. I know the Flora Community Club wanted the $10,000 for, um, the fair, um.
What did they want it for?
The fair, I believe.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I've just read their thing in here, yeah, so that's just, just help with the fair.
Mm-hmm. And the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce, um, for $95,000. And then the $20,000 for the Cutler Small Shops, and, um, I know that they draw a lot of people in, but that's the, um, the Pandora's Box, I think that we may get into, is with that going to an individual business person, uh, instead of a, a non-for-profit, um, I think we'll be opening a Pandora's Box and requests that come in from an individual business person, I kind of think that, uh, that's why banks have business loans. Concerning the, um, the chamber, you know, that was initiated in, what, '05, '04 or '05, I think, as seed money to get the chamber started, um, and thought that they would be on their own, uh, be able to, to move their organization forward on their own in four or five years, and that's 20 years ago. I, I don't, I don't think that that has happened, obviously it hasn't. And I would like to see that the Chamber of Commerce get moved, um, under the auspices and the umbrella of the EDC. I think Flora Community Club probably is, is sufficient, they want to bring back rides and things like that to the fair this year. In my opinion, that's probably what draws in a lot of people to a fair event. Senior and Family Services, I think that that would, that would be fine, um, they do a lot of good for, for the county. So, um, now I'm gonna ask on the owner occupied rehab, if we put forward the 10%, but, and let's say the, there's 400,000 available, but only 200,000 of that is used, our total exposure would be 20,000, is that correct?
I'd have to ask that.
Okay, I'm curious, I'm curious on that, you know, if we put forward X number of dollars, but it's not all used, is there a, a liability clause in there that if it's used, or if it isn't, we can, you know?
I'll ask.
Okay, you understand what I'm asking? Okay, thank you.
Do you have to pay the whole amount every time? I think that's, I wouldn't want me to ask, yeah, well, yeah, no, he's asking that we get it back, I'm asking it, like, say, um, there's others that have to bring in bills, and then they get paid out of that, and so if there's something left in the edit, it just goes back to edit at the end of the year, that's what I was asking, okay?
Yes.
Uh, I was wondering if I could come out to talk a little bit about the chamber request a little bit more, if that's okay?
Sure.
Good morning, um, I'm Madison, I'm the executive director for the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce. Um, I kind of wanted to hit a little bit on that as well, um, I know Scott had kind of mentioned something about, um, with us being self-sufficient. So we are self-sufficient, the money we're asking for is for tourism to do for the county. So it's additional work that I'm doing on top of my alre, like, already busy job, um, and so it's just, the way I see it is more of a partnership, um, we do ask for some funds to go to admin, because I'm doing additional work for the county. The way I view it is, I'm contracted with you all to do tourism, we don't have a tourism bureau, so the chamber has worked with the county to be the source of tourism on behalf. Um, and that's kind of how I viewed it a little bit, and, um, just kind of want to make it aware, it is not because we aren't self-sufficient. We are self-sufficient, we're just doing additional work, um, on behalf of the county. Um, and so we ask for funds to fund that, but then we manage it on behalf of the county. So, just kinda wanted to clarify.
Where, where does the innkeeper's tax fit into that whole thing?
So the innkeeper's tax, we're just now starting to still see some money come in. I believe the last money that I got was, um, around thirty-six thousand dollars that we had in innkeeper's tax, and that's with a year, year and a half, I believe, of collecting, 'cause we just reinstated that last year. Do you remember that by chance? And so I don't have the numbers in front of me. But the commission, for the CBT Commission, we are meeting next Monday, um, the twenty-seventh, and so we are starting to allocate some of those funds. So we are still building that up, and that is why we are still asking for edit funds, um, for tourism.
True.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify that.
And I don't, I don't know that I necessarily meant that the Chamber of Commerce be completely done away with. I think it, it should be moved under the umbrella of the EDC, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Some counties do that, but not every county does that as well, so it would be a decision between our two boards if we would wanna consolidate, because we're nonprofit organizations, so-
Right.
So we're, the chamber, we're a nonprofit organization, we're not a government, like, affiliated.
Well-
In a sense.
You are financially.
With twenty thousand dollars because we're doing additional work-
Well-
-for tourism. Or, like, are you saying from the start?
No, I mean, to the tune of ninety-five thousand dollars, that's your request, so there is a financial burden on the taxpayers of, of the county to do that. And like I said, I think, uh, 'cause you mentioned that some counties do have that under the, the umbrella of EDC.
Yeah, well-
Well, years ago, I found that there were, there were some EDCs that actually were under the chamber. Some of these, some of these large cities that are very powerful chambers of commerce, they're the ones that, that, um-
At the economic development factor.
Yes.
As the, as an EDC board member, I'd like to also weigh, weigh in on this, since you're, you're suggesting that the two combined. The EDC and the chamber really have different missions. Both of the organizations work hard to try to improve economic development in the county and, um, advertising and promotion of the county as a great place to live, work, and play. The EDC is more, uh, working with industry and business and attracting businesses to the county. The chamber works more on supporting the businesses that are already here, particularly the small businesses, and attracting, um, the, the advertising that you do, uh, and that she, that the chamber also shares with local organizations is to bring people to come to events and to promote, uh, the activities that we already have in the county. So, you're correct, we do both work to promote the county, but we do it in really different tracks. Uh, and it would be a really large burden for the EDC to try to take over all of the work that the chamber does. So, so really, they operate very well as two separate organizations. The chamber also has Chamber Five, that is a nonprofit organization, that they do additional nonprofit work in the county, so the- I can certainly take your suggestion to the board, but we've discussed this over the years, um, as whether or not this is a, a thing that should be done, and, and both organizations really believe that their, their missions are enough different that it would be, it would not be a synergy, it would be a distraction to try to, to merge them both under one umbrella.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Both of you. Well, I thank Scott for going through, itemizing through these, his thoughts and concerns on that. I have one other one that, boy, it's hard for me to get my head around a hundred and forty thousand dollars for a bathroom that's going to be used ten days a year, so that, that's a hard one for me. Now, I'm not happy with the one that's there. I mean, it's pretty disgusting.
It is.
But sure seemed like a lot of money.
I, I don't disagree. I certainly don't disagree.
The first question I have for you, Scott, is are we going, do you want to finish this today, or wait till Lauren's here, or... I mean, we've put this off several times, no doubt. These people are getting tired of coming in and-
Well, I mean, the funds would not be available until January one.
That's right.
Correct?
Yeah, because it's the twenty twenty-six.
Right, right. So there is time, because the, the council could take it up the latter part of November? Or even-
Well, I have to, you have to decide, and then I have to advertise.
Okay.
So if you would-
We don't know that Lauren will be back in two weeks. He may not be.
I'm sure that Lauren will not be here on November third. But, um, he is going home today, so, um, he might. I don't know.
We can't consult with him privately, we have to decide this publicly.
Public, right.
You can, you can talk to him. I mean, there's no reason why you can't talk to him about project. Matter of fact, he is listening to the-
Is this a project of that term?
Mm-hmm, it would be.
It's kind of a, he's not available, but he is available. I'm just saying, thinking about, if you wait till the seventeenth, it can't be done in December. I would have to put it on there at gender four, December.
Right.
Which is not a problem. But it is a problem for some of them that are waiting to know that they've got the funds or not. Can you do a partial? I mean, you can have to, I mean, you can ask Ted if you could do two.
You mean, approve-
If you really wanna do.
Approve and partiality?
Yes?
For the Flora Community Club, we are, we, we are kinda waiting to know whether or not we have this money. We have to book this carnival, and if we don't have money to book the carnival, we, we can't do that. He needs to know sooner rather than later. We already told him that it was gonna be at least another month. And he's kind and he's patient, but, um, time kills all deals. If we can't get the, this carnival booked, we'll be up without a carnival.
Okay. Thank you.
Doing it today, I can't get it advertised within October meeting. I'd have to go to the November meeting.
And he is aware of that.
Okay. But Ted, I have a question. Can, can they do, can they approve certain twenty twenty-six? Am I, am I saying this right?
Mm-hmm.
Request, and then later come back, like, in December and approve more? Or-
Well, it's an amendment. It would be an amendment of the-
Twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, capital improvement plan for twenty twenty-six. Yeah, they can, they can do it at any time.
You don't have to do them all at the same time.
Well, no, I mean, from, from the standpoint of the statute on edit tax, no, they don't have to do them all at the same time. But from the standpoint of planning by the organizations, that may be another question.
Right, I am, yeah, that's what I had to say, so.
There are several one here that I think, well, we're contracted for, so they've, they've gotta-
Right.
They've gotta go, or, um, I think that we're in agreement on that we need, that we'd like to do. I'd like to go ahead and do those.
Mm-hmm, I'd be, I'd be fine with that.
The senior citizens, they're, they are waiting to see if they have the bank on this money. Otherwise, they gotta look for other sources.
Right.
And who's that?
Sen- the Senior Family Services, the twenty thousand.
Oh, okay. Well, let's start down it, Scott. EDC. We're contracted for that, so we're gonna do that, aren't we?
Yep.
Let me, give me, have time to write here, one eighty-three, eight thirty-three. Burlington Community Club.
I would say yes.
Um, and that's for three. Chamber of Commerce.
I would hold that out.
Okay. Community, Flora Community Club.
Yes.
For ten. Carroll County Senior and Family Services.
Yes.
Yes, I definitely think so. That's twenty. Now, old jail. I'm, we, we have kicked this around before on the jail of putting in a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. That's for mold remediation in the cell block, primarily. I think there's a little outside of it. I'm not in favor of putting much money at all into the old cell block. I'm in favor of getting rid of it. In fact, so much so that I have a meeting at one o'clock today. I wanted to have it before now, so I could say, well, here's what it's gonna cost, but I have a meeting at one o'clock, which, if you can make it, I would like for you to-
Okay.
To take out the jail, the, the cell block.
Cell area.
Yeah.
And block out the admin part.
Yeah. So, so we know how much, this is, to get an estimate, and we won't get the estimate today, I'm sure you've gotta think about it. But to get an estimate on just removal of that, so we're done with that expense, 'cause I'm afraid we're gonna come back two years from now, and gee, we're gonna need another hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars for mold. And for empty cells, I don't, I don't see it, so-
I, I'd be willing to hold it out as well.
Let's hold it off. Fair bathroom, I already told you, I can't see a hundred and forty thousand dollars for a restroom. I just-
Do you guys have an update?
Huh?
We have an update we could share.
Oh, okay. Sure.
So after, after we met on that Tuesday, a couple of guys came out and we all met. I met with Twin Oaks on Wednesday about it. They revoked their bid. So we met with the three contractors again that were still, uh, 'cause we initially got four quotes. To try to simplify it, cut, cut whatever cost we can to get as close to the one forty. That was already advertised. These are the quotes that came in. FG come in at one forty-two. So with that being advertised, the hundred and forty being advertised, you know, we could see about raising the extra two thousand dollars.
How many quotes do you have?
We, we have three. The, the one is still left from last time. He did not choose to update it.
Okay.
I, I guess I, I'm sorry, I did not bring that one with me. But it was a one-
Two new ones.
I have two, two new ones today, and they're, they're both from the current people that have already quoted it. Um, they just revised their bids. So th- these are just a revision of that. The third one is still at one. It, it's around that one eighty mark. Yeah, something like that.
So the two I have here in my hands is one forty-two and one sixty-four.
Yes, and those are revised from the last meeting.
So Twin Oaks opted not to give an updated?
Yeah, well, he, 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 he's the reason that we he's the reason that, that we met with all the three contractors that were still left, because he, he removed his bid.
Okay.
He didn't, he didn't, a- after everything, he, he wanted to just pull it and just not be a part of the project.
Okay.
So, to elaborate a little bit more, um, obviously, as for our exhibit board, looking at these, it was really hard for us, knowing that we'd already proposed this, um, quote to you guys, um, asking for the county's assistance on, on their, on their behalf, um, and we already had a set range, dollar amount, and then they pulled their bid, and we had to go back and circle back and see what we could do. I think Matt alluded to the fact that we would still like to move forward with the one forty, and then see if our board, um, the 4H exhibit board could come up with the remaining value of roughly two thousand dollars. If not, we can, um, figure out how to work around that ourselves. We do still think this is an important project, 'cause like we alluded to at the last commissioner's meeting when we shared how much our own nonprofit organization has put into the maintenance of these facilities that are not even owned by us, so if the county were to choose to do something with this ground, that is a loss for us, one hundred percent. We have continuously put in the money to keep the facilities at least efficient for our use. Um, and that's why we shared with the restroom is such a major, um, need, because it would be a liability to the county if something were to happen. If, um, a youth were to walk in and trip on uneven concrete, or elderly individual would try and get into the men's ra- restroom and get trapped in between the very narrow openings. The county would ultimately be liability, uh, li- liable, excuse me, um, for any of those issues. 'Cause we initially did propose, um, trying to do the renovations through our nonprofit organization alone, but due to the financial cost of just the expenses of today's world, um, this is, this is kinda where we came back to, um, asking for the county's assistance, and like, we realized it was, it was gonna be a hefty cost, just with the cost of materials and labor and everything today. And, and I can definitely understand the thought that it's only used ten days, maybe out of the year. But like we alluded to last time, if there are updates like this to the fairgrounds, there could be opportunities for other organizations to then want to rent it. Like I mentioned last time, RMC wanted to ha- host their annual banquet there. But when they realized they'd have to spend a couple thousand dollars on bringing porta-potties in, um, they didn't think it was worth their time. So they ultimately went to White County. Um, additionally, when you look at some of the other organizations that are pulling money out of the edit fund, they're using that money likewise for the same duration. So that's why we thought it was, um, justifiable. And I thought last time too, it was proposed that the one forty came from either edit or rainy day, so we weren't sure if we could suggest maybe pulling it from both locations, without having to increase our quote cost of the initial one forty. So, um, that's why we wanted to come and share an update today. Like I said, it was unfortunate for us to receive that news, and I know we're still asking for, for a lot of money to, to move forward with this project, but we're hoping that we can continue this partnership and, and try and alleviate some of the costs by asking for, um, new bids, and then maybe inputting even more money out of our own pockets for this project as well.
Would you guys pass the highway to help tear it down?
Yes, and, and actually, um, when Scott and Lauren came out after the commissioner's meeting there two weeks ago, we had the, some of the town out there with us, and they gotta see, um, some of that projects. And it was mentioned, asking the town if they would help do some of the, or the highway department, do some of the gutting and, um, installation of new water lines, I believe.
Be the, the demo, which I think wasn't at around five thousand dollars, I think would be saved.
I thought it was four.
Four?
I, I think, I think Mark said four.
And, and looking at the FG quote of one forty-two right now, you can see that under, um, number one, it actually still has demo on there. So that was still included, because we are not sure what partnerships we could include, um, with other county entities to maybe lower some of our costs as well, if we could do things like that.
The, 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 what, the demo and the plumbing was like twenty-seven thousand, yes. At least on the one quote.
The two I have both have demo of existing restroom on them. So maybe there is a area that we could be better on.
Cut some from, yeah.
You know, I, w- w- when we were meeting with them, I was reluctant to tell them to not put that in there without the county saying yes, that we will help or won't help.
This one quote, is it from a company called ASK?
Yes. That would be Keith Brumball.
Keith Brumball.
From Camden area.
Okay. Okay.
Do you guys know, host, open shows? Other counties and, or around the state of Indiana to bring them in, and that would be one of the ten days of the year.
We currently don't, but, but we would like to, you know, if we can, basically if you feel good about the facility you're providing.
And I'm Beth Myers, and I, I'm a 4H project leader, and that's why I'm, I'm stepping up for these guys, because I know those bathrooms are awful, and, you know, it's a wonder somebody hasn't gone hurt.
Well, I, I have gotten some calls about this, of people who are concerned about spending a hundred and forty thousand dollars on them. I would like to set that one aside for further discussion.
That's, that's one with me. Yeah, we've got a couple that we've set aside.
Thank you, Jonah.
Thank you.
Thank you. The one for Ross Brown, you, you, for Cutler, you have, um.
I, I, like I said, I think that, that may be opening a Pandora's box, um, for individual business owners to come in for taxpayer edit. I think the taxpayers would have an issue, um, having their taxes go to an individual business.
And I, I can understand that, he is in the process of, of, uh, forming a not-for-profit and putting that building into the not-for-profit. I think maybe the best deal would be for him to come back in when that is completed and talk to him. Uh, Carroll Manor, thirty thousand dollars.
I didn't receive any paperwork from him.
Yeah, I, I.
I don't know what it's for.
Yeah.
It seems like we just kinda grabbed a number, and.
We set it aside as well, I mean, I don't disagree with the fact that it probably could use some repairs, I know the, um, the activity room roof has some issues out there, but, um, maybe until we get something a little more concrete.
Okay, I, let, let me tell you what I've done on the activity room so far. I think both of us have been out there and seen it, right?
I have.
And. I don't know how to tactfully say it, I, I'm not concerned about a piece of mold that's about that big, that's up on a vent, to me, we get some Lysol and window cleaner and wipe it off and, and go right on. Um, it did have the gentleman that is, I don't see the shirt back here now, but the gentleman that we have as a maintenance person.
Yeah.
Come over and look at it, and see what they thought of it, and he said, I don't think it'll be a big problem, I think I can take care of it.
Okay.
So, I, I hate to, I'm s- I don't want that to be what we put thirty thousand dollars into, cuz we had a couple of verbal things of one hundred, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to repair the mold, that if it were my personal building, I would do it with a big ladder and my own scrubbing. It just seemed like a lot of money. Uh, so. I'm not opposed to thirty thousand dollars out of this for the manor. We've required everybody else though to tell us what it's for.
Exactly.
And, truthfully, I'm gonna have my wife biting at me about this, cuz she's, she's wanting that put in there, but.
She's the.
Huh?
She's the council rep for.
She's the council rep for him, right? She couldn't be here that day, so she called Mr. Ryder to come in and present that, and that's part of why that he doesn't have a list to give you of what it's for, cuz he got delegated that that morning. But I'd still like to set it aside if you could.
Okay, yeah, fine with that.
And if any of you wanna comment on any of this, just tell me. Housing grant, forty thousand dollars. I think it's a good deal.
I, I completely, completely agree, um. What do you think about dropping that back to, since this is the first year delving into this, dropping it back to twenty-five or thirty? Which would give us two hundred and fifty thousand or maybe three hundred thousand? And just kinda see how it goes?
I think that's reasonable, um.
They, I, I made a phone call, and they did say that whatever you don't use, which, um.
Come, comes back?
Yes.
Yeah, well.
Stay in the Edit, Edit Fund, if you only use ten thousand out of thirty, then twenty of it stays in your Edit Fund.
Okay.
Myself, just as I was saying, housing grant, forty thousand dollars, and I think it's a good deal, my thought going on in my head at the same time was pretty close to what you said, Scott, of, well, mine was, well, we'll find out if it's worth it or not after one year, now, if you wanna drop it to find out it, about it, I'm not opposed to that. If you wanna say, let's put, how about thirty thousand?
I, I would be good with thirty.
Okay.
Can I?
Yes.
I, oh, I wanna thank you first of all, and, um, like you said, this is also a recurring grant that you can apply for in the future, so if it did work out, and you decided that it was something we wanted to go forward on, we can do it again.
Right.
So.
If we see this as an overwhelming success, and it really does a lot of good out here, why, we might wanna put fifty in it next year, you know? That'll just be something we talk about, okay? So, we're about to the bottom of the list, did, in the past, we put some money into the parks, haven't we, out of, um, we never have? Okay, I'm wrong now. Huh?
Edit funds?
Yeah.
No, we have, but.
Yeah, we have.
We haven't gotten a request.
Any request, right.
Right.
Right, we, we requested a couple of different, uh, funding measures for painting of the both shelter houses. Clubhouse at Deer Creek Park and the Shelter House in French Forest.
Okay.
Are you anticipating, uh, bringing something to the board? Are you anticipating that requesting some money?
What did you come up with, I'm wondering if we have the same things here.
I got two forty-six, eight thirty-three.
Bingo, exactly what I added up.
Okay, must add in two forty-six.
Two forty-six, eight thirty-three.
And that's for one, two, three, four, five different projects?
One.
Yep.
One, two, three, four, five, yes.
Which, I wanna start down now and make a list of those we're still considering, okay? So we're still looking at Chamber. And we're still looking at, well, we could still put the old jail in, because we, we might have to do some tearing down. Or we'll just cut it completely.
I have it on hold.
Yeah, yeah.
Put it on hold.
Yeah.
That way. To be discussed at a later point, I believe.
Okay, I'd like to put Ross Brown on there for Cutler Community, if, um, he gets his not-for-profit through that we consider.
Building.
Yep. That's it, right?
And, um.
Well, wait, we didn't put Carroll Manor.
Yeah, well. We, I have it as a hold.
I have. One, two, three, four on hold.
Four on hold, five funded.
Five on hold.
Five on hold?
The Chamber, the bathrooms, the renovations.
Bathrooms, that's what it's for.
Ross Brown and the Carroll Manor.
And the other one is owner occupied for thirty thousand.
So that's one of the five that are.
Yeah.
Yeah. Didn't we agree to do that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess have to vote on those. Vote on this five.
Okay. Do I need to list those individually?
Yes, please, yeah.
I'm just curious if you're putting the jail renovation remediation back, is that not going to increase the price again? It's already increased because it's been put off, or is it not going to increase again?
For mold remediation? Yeah, Mark. Yeah.
I think you just keep kicking that can down the road, it's gonna need to get done no matter what.
No.
I guess I just don't.
I don't agree. If we knock the walls down and haul it away, if we haven't kicked it down the road, we fixed it.
But you're still gonna need the money to do that, and you're putting nothing in, and does that not?
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Does that not jeopardize the integrity of the building, if you knock down?
Well, that's what we gotta find out. Yes.
How much square footage of the old jail do we need to keep, how much are we using?
Why, how much do we need to keep?
How much square footage do you need, the old jail, what are you using for?
It hasn't been put to us as a, how, as square foot, but.
It's the administration side, Jeff, of.
They're using now.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, pretty much the administration side. Which would be from the kitchen to the west, if you will.
No way you could take that building and smash it, move this down to Tatty Street on the building you bought? You know, the problem, sorry, I probably ruffled some feathers, but when a county keeps a building, they find a use for it. If you don't smash that thing, they go, well, we need burn office here, we'll just spend a couple hundred thousand for another office here, burn office here, storage room here, as sooner or later, use the whole building, and the taxpayers are paying for their building we don't actually need. And if you, you know, I just think that, keeping an old building, build it right, you need to smash it, use what you need, or move it, or build a new facility. Keeping an old one's gonna be nothing, but how much money have you heard that you have the last ten years? The drain lines, then you've done this, electrical, you've done this, you just keep dumping money out of it.
At the time, we relined all of the drain lines down through there, I was saying, it, I, it bothered me to buy a new saddle for a dead horse.
Yeah.
And that's what it seemed like we were doing there with it.
If you see the taxpayer, you need to get rid of something that's gonna cost them money.
Well, when we have come up with the idea of uses for the cell block, you know, we, we have suggested storage spaces, uh, we've suggested, which we're gonna need more of, we've suggested, uh, storage for all the, um, uh, evidence from the big trial and all that, which is, what, twenty-four filing cabinets and a bunch of other stuff?
That lays.
Yeah, that is considerable, but nobody wants to put it in the cell blocks because of the mold problem. But we have nothing that says we can get this mold killed for a hundred and forty-two thousand. And there just aren't a whole lot of uses for old jail cells. You know, the awful lot of steel in there, you, you can't, you can't open it up into one big room and do that, no, it really can't be, it'd be, it'd be cheaper to push it down and build a new building than it would be to try to take all the old jail, jail sales, cells out that are all steel reinforced and everything, I mean.
That's my thoughts exactly.
Mm-hmm.
Be good kicking a can down the road, it picks it.
We do a lot of can kicking around here, and, um, some, sometimes it's bit us in the rear end doing that, but it's not a good thing to do, other times, it's kinda worked out, I. Sometimes I better not say what I'm thinking, you know, just let it go. So anyway, you wanna, you wanna form a motion for me, Scott, that would be of the five that we are going to fund right now?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, um, concerning the twenty-twenty-six Edit Request that we fund the EDC contract, the Burlington Community Club, the Flora Community Club, the Carroll County Senior and Family Services, and the, uh, thirty thousand dollars in owner occupied rehab, um, grant program with curtsy.
Okay, and I'll second that, anybody wanna discuss that more? Call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. And now we are ready for.
We have something else on the recorder.
Okay.
She's still here. I was just gonna talk to him after the meeting. He has to get okayed, not the part about employees, but to have the Christmas trees here, Mando, do you wanna talk about that real quick?
Okay. I was approached by, uh, Julia Lakey again, about putting the Christmas trees up downstairs, and, um.
Putting what?
Christmas trees up this holiday season, around the downstairs, and so, um, I was needing your approval to go ahead and do that, if the offices wanna so, do it again, we still have our trees and decorations and.
Well, thanks, Scott. Me too.
Absolutely.
I love it.
It looks, it looks really nice.
They have an evening walk scheduled for December eleventh, and Keith and I have talked, and we're both okay with, uh, doing that if, I know I need to ask for approval to use the building.
Please.
So, that, that'll come later, but, just so you have a heads up.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we need a, a motion on the, on the, uh.
The usage? Is it a usage?
We have the usage for the, uh, Christmas trees.
I'll ma- I'll make a motion, uh, that we approve, um, the first floor of the courthouse for the display of Christmas trees.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Bob Burton's, oh no, jeez, we got a bunch more to go. Um, Ted, you're up.
There should be a letter, and I've got both of the letters for this management for courthouse trash and, I don't know, they have that letter, if you have the one.
I don't know.
Okay, is this the one?
That's for your tree park.
Okay.
Bob's already had him contacted about getting the dumpster right.
Yeah, they, they're coming after it, um, they say it would be picked up on Thursday, last week.
So we need to pay the last invoice, which, uh, is, I gave you the last invoice, left it on your.
Sixty-three thirty-six is the number of the invoice.
I have a copy of it. Hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-three cents, and that's due to twenty-nine. That needs to be paid, but we need to, uh, the, uh, invoice says, it's, it accompanied a price increase, and what the document says is that we, we have a right to terminate the service agreement within thirty days. Now, there will be fees, but we don't know what those are yet, we'll see how it goes, but we gotta, that, that terminates it, and we should include the payment of the last invoice.
Okay.
We won't be obligated to going forward anyway.
Yes, I'll get that.
Already got that?
Yeah.
Well, so what, how should we frame the motion here for this, Ted?
Motion to terminate the waste management, uh, services for the Deer Creek Park.
Does it need to include that we're gonna pay the old one in the motion?
It does.
There is going to be a two hundred dollar charge for them to pull that out. I'll be receiving that probably next month. That's what they charge. They, they actually charge three hundred dollars, three hundred dollars to put it in and three hundred dollars to put it out. And the last bill that I got, uh, was an increase from one thirty-something to one seventy-one, and it ended up being a thirty-five dollar increase. No, no word about it, no, it's just accepted and go on.
Okay, well, of course, we appreciate everybody's concern about rising costs. Um, so we need just, uh, um.
We need, we need to, uh, terminate it, uh, we, so we don't have charges going forward.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we terminate, uh, waste management contract, uh, with the Delphi Park, or the Deer Creek, Deer Creek Park, and pay the balance of one seventy-one ninety-three.
Okay, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I've got a letter also that I sent, thinking that you might sign it before today's meeting. I'll print, I'll have Jan print it. Need to make the same motion for the courthouse.
Courthouse.
Just the same motion that you, uh, moved to terminate the waste management contract for service to the county courthouse.
I'll make a motion that we cancel the contract with waste management for the Carroll County courthouse.
It's worded differently because they have, they were operating under a previous contractor's contract, so we've got more of a chance of avoiding some of these additional fees with that, and it'd be with the Deer, Deer Creek Park.
Okay, I will second your.
And that's all I have.
Okay, I'll second your motion and call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Uh, thank you, Ted. Bob Burton, did we just take care of your part except for your resignation, which we're not gonna accept, so.
Uh, yeah, I think so, that's it. Um, I submitted that the last meeting.
Okay, and we saw it.
And, uh, I have went through the whole entire park board to see if anyone wanted to, to take the job and.
Nobody wanted to take the job. You would, you would think at the big salary you get, that somebody would jump on that.
Yeah. Yes, that twenty-five dollars a meeting is, um, you know, that goes a long way.
Yeah, well, that, that's better than some of the, most of the meetings I go to, but, okay, well, um, we wanna thank you for all the years that you've put in, a lot of work on the park, and cared a lot, and really got the community coesed around the parks where it, it's a viable organization now, and the parks are vastly improved, so thank you, Bob.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Bob. Motion to accept resignation?
I guess.
Well, regretfully, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, Bob's resignation as park director.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you again, Bob.
Thanks.
Um, 4H exhibit board, we've already been through that, haven't we? Uh, EMS director Doug. Now, Bob, the door's always open here, you can come back and visit us.
Oh, the hell will.
Okay.
Good morning. Um, as you guys remember, probably about a month or so ago, we had an employee that requested medical leave.
Yes.
Out of FMLA. Um, you guys granted that thirty-day leave. Um, he has since then, again, requested additional time. Um, I know he has a doctor appointment at the end of the month. We don't know where that's gonna go, whether he's gonna be able to come back then, or if he's gonna need additional time. Don't know for sure. Um, so I guess I'm here to ask you guys if you will grant his medical leave, um, or not.
You need to give us a, a time span, or?
Uh, I don't know. I know that we're, it's starting to get in, we're starting to have trouble filling shifts, um, getting people to work, his, his openings, um, and I don't know what he's gonna find out on the thirty-first. So I don't know really how to, how to go about.
Well, so, so should we do it until November third, or you wanna go till?
Till the next meeting.
Uh, yeah, it's the next meeting.
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
He's, he's used up FMLA?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I think depending upon potentially what he finds out, um, at that appointment, then we can make decisions.
After that.
After that.
So you need to, you need to make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we extend the medical leave of the employee, um, and then discuss, uh, his future, uh, after he has his, his appointment at the beginning of November.
Second.
To November third.
Yes, November third.
Second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Then the, um, the next thing I had is I just wanted to get your guys' approval. The, I put in my twenty-twenty-six budget. Um, I put back in there to get an assistant director again. The council has preliminarily, um, okayed that position. They gotta do their final vote in the end of the month, um, but I just wanted to approach you guys to get your approval then to, to advertise and start hiring, looking to hire for that position once they give their final approval. We have a job description that we had in the past that we can use. We don't really need a new job description or anything.
So you're asking us for a motion that would say, when that's approved, you can begin the hiring process?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, um, upon the approval of the council for the assistant director, that, um, our EMS director be able to advertise for that position.
And that would begin January one, that the position would.
But you're really accepting that new position again?
Yes.
I'll second it and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Head custodian Keith. Ah, there you are.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning, Keith.
Let me kiss. In, in that binder, it's just photos of, uh, Max Wash Pros and what they've done to it. And the exterior, uh, of the courthouse and of the soldier monument and ceiling it. Um, I think they did an absolute wonderful job. The very top section, the rim that goes around the courthouse, the black that you still see. When they got up there first initially, they thought maybe some kind of mold or, um, just over the years. Um, it's actually rubber that has melted, 'cause when they put the roof on along the edge line of the courthouse, they had put a rubber mat on that ledge all the way around. Well, over the years, the heat and sunlight hitting it, um, it's actually the rubber that's, you're seeing on the black spots. They went up there and tried to, as much as they possibly could, they even took a heat gun to it to see if they could break off as much as they possibly could. Um, but it's gonna be one of those things to get that completely gone. They'll take several more treatments, you know, whenever, next time, gentlemen decide that the exterior of the building needs to be cleaned. If you look at the U-drive, um, between the shed and courthouse, you can actually see, uh, an outline of a black line that's coming down from the roof or from over the years, it's actually rubber. But they got everything completely done, um, for the exterior, exterior windows, and ceiling, including the soldier monument. On that.
You have quite a picture book here.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's a more of an outline, uh, about to grab it on my second way up, of details of what they did and the chemicals and pressure and stuff that they have seen.
I looked it up.
Yeah.
After cleaning it, I mean, it's kinda neat because you can see the swirl marks from the tools from when they were actually building the courthouse, especially over there by the museum door side and along that, really cleaned up, really nice right through there. Um, it's really neat to see, uh, they did find some gaps and like the, where it's chipped off between the two, between the sections of the concrete and the limestone, there's gaps in the ceiling and stuff like that. But it's all indicated in the report that, uh, he's gonna send me, and I'll make sure you guys obviously get a copy, you guys get a copy of it.
So at some point, we're gonna have to have some repointing done?
Yes. Um, there's no, there's no section that they, he had indicated to me of a concern to where it was gonna, another section of it would break off and like hit somebody or hit anything. Um, it just, it's like little pieces here and there that had, over the years, and with the weather and stuff like that. It's taken a blunt hit to it, especially the west side, um, most of the weather it comes out of, um, but it looks great compared to what it, uh, I don't think those photos do as much justice as it does on a lot of things, and when you're looking at it compared to what it used to look like with all the black and everything else.
Looks good to me when I walk around it.
Yeah, and it also did show that, um, one of the things that in the future we'll have to discuss is, uh, getting the windows treated, because one of the things it did show is how many of these windows does leak, because they've never been, they've never been serviced. There, no one, no new window seals ever been put in or anything like that, locking, locking mechanisms or anything like that, um. So it's something in the future that we'll have to discuss as well.
These windows are approaching thirty years.
Yeah, I think eighty-five, eighty-six is when I think I saw that they were installed.
So they're more than that, they're forty years old.
Um, the only other things I have is, uh, if I get you guys, uh, to reach out, um, I, I need a load of dirt. We're getting sinkholes in the yard that's really, really bad. Um, I've reached out, uh, just, and I know everybody's busy and everything else. I just, I need a load of dirt, um, to fill in some of these sinkholes. Um, we got some place where, like, here on the north side steps, it's washed, I mean, it's washing away more and more as rain comes through, stuff that needs to be filled up. We got holes out here where the old maple tree used to be, over there by the gazebo. They're just popping up, and I don't, I don't know why. Like, it's not like a mole hole, or they're just like, they just show up.
There, there's a sinkhole out here.
Yeah.
That you can step off in and twist an ankle or something.
Correct.
It's not very far inside the stone wall, but it's, it's right out here. I, I imagine you know about it, I don't have to.
Yeah, and I've, I've come, I went through, I went and found a whole bunch of buckets and stuff, uh, at one point and filled up as much as I could. Um, using my truck to fill up some of these holes that were out here, especially right before the Easter egg hunt and stuff, I was really concerned about, but like the one at the gazebo, it wasn't as bad, um, as it is significantly it is now. I don't know, 'cause we don't have utility lines ran over that way. I mean, as many times as we've had eight-one-one come out, and we don't have utilities over there on that side, so I don't know where they're coming from. And like the patch of mushrooms that we have, that could grow out here on, um, just on one random spot, but have you guys, well? Yeah, I've contacted the highway, um.
Do we still have a dirt pod behind the jail?
Yes, well, the transfer station.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we could have the, the highway garage.
Yes.
Get a truck and fill it up and bring it over.
Guys could reach out. I, I have many times. I appreciate that.
You wouldn't give him a call?
Yeah, I can. I, I have, I have.
I'll let, I'll, I'll give him, I'll get with him, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would, that would be absolutely wonderful. Um, and lastly, uh, you know, you guys have the form, it's a request for, uh, the monument lights. Um, Delphi Main Street wants to, they have invested over ten thousand dollars on new lights for the monument. They acquired the old lights, half of them didn't work, it was a lot of problems, they were better off just buying new lights. They wanted to fully take control and ownership, uh, and making sure that it happens for the county again, 'cause, uh, a lot of people miss it. And it, they got the dates on the application as well, too, uh, for, to reinstall, um, the lights. I think it was like twenty-one, twenty-two was the last year that the lights were up, somewhere around there, I, I forget. Um, but they're asking permission if, um, to continue that tradition and put monument lights up, I think starting November eleventh.
Who's gonna do it?
Delphi Main Street.
Delphi Main Street. I've got, I've got eleven seventeen through twelve thirty-one.
Eleven seventeen. Delphi Main Street's taking charge of it.
Yeah, I just remember Pat, Pat Clausen used to climb up on there and do those.
Yeah, and they've invested a lot of money to make it happen again for the county. So that's.
Well, I guess I'll, while the subject's at hand, I'll make a motion that we, um, allow Delphi Main Street to, uh, put Christmas lights on the monument, starting eleven seventeen to run through twelve thirty-one.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's the letter that you have actually authorized already, the, the second letter, Waste Management, or, or the courthouse.
Okay.
Does it need a signature? It doesn't have a place for a signature.
Well, there's only, I, I set it up in case one of you came in during the week last week, so there's only one signature, right, right beneath where it says Carroll County.
Carroll County Board of Commissioners, yeah.
Sign two.
Autograph it.
Oh, we're sending them to two locations, 'cause that's another thing with waste management. I mean, their, their billing is one place and their headquarters is another, so we're, we need to send two of those letters.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Um, now, Dara, I just buried my agenda.
Next one is the resignation of, um.
Eric Ross. Okay, there's another one I hate to lose, is Eric Ross. He's been on our economic development board for, oh, a few years now. I don't know how many it's been.
I think it was two terms.
Two terms, so it'll be six years. Uh, do you have somebody that has, uh?
Yes, um, I think he sent, did you get the letter from Seth Eldridge? Um, I can forward that to you. Seth Eldridge from Fisher and Associates in Flora. We have his information, and he's a good community supporter. Fisher and Associates is an excellent partner for community development. Um, he is the one I'd like to recommend for approval as Eric Ross's replacement.
And what's his name again?
Seth.
Seth Eldridge.
Hmm.
He's a CPA with Fisher and Associates.
CPA, huh.
Put it on the next agenda, and I can get that letter and put it on there for you.
Okay. Thank you.
But we can accept Eric's today, right? Or not? Or should we do it all together? Okay, I'll make a motion that we, um, regretfully accept Eric Ross's, um, resignation from Carroll County EDC.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Motion passed. I don't know, we don't have a reporter here anymore, I was thinking about how we could, uh...
I can give her a call and see if she'll, she'll do that.
Okay.
The next thing is the invitation from the annual meeting of overlapping tax and units. And I think I put a copy of this letter in. If not, I will put a copy of this in your mailbox.
Yeah, I've got it.
Got it, okay. I thought it was. All it is is asking you to attend a meeting on November the tenth at five P.M. at the Delphi City Hall. And you can read your letter. Just wanted to make sure you got that. The other thing that I, I have is, um, I gave to Scott, Dr. Anderson would like to change a couple of things on his public health nurse's, um, job description. It's already been approved by Kent Rowland, his office. So, all you have to do is approve it. There's only two, I think, mine or...
That's for the Health Department, yeah.
Yeah.
Those, there's only a couple of places where it needs to...
Now, it says on here, an associate's or bachelor's degree and current license for registered nurse. Of course, we went for years with a... I don't remember, I don't know what her, she was some kind of a practical nurse or something like that.
I don't think she had a nurse's license at all. You and I kind of investigated that.
Really? Oh, way back, yeah, we hadn't, yeah, we had a fraud on that one. But I'm, I'm... Uh, don't use that word?
Just don't play it up.
Okay. But my wife would kill me if she didn't remember her name. The lady that was for so long was a nurse downstairs down here, um, had gray hair.
Joyce.
Joyce, yeah. She was not an RN, she, she was a... Something like that. Yeah.
She was a good nurse.
She was wonderful. Good with kids. So, my question is on all of this, do we want it to say they have to be an RN?
I think he would like for it to be because there's certain things coming down the stretch that he wants them to be in charge of.
Okay. That's what I wanted, was a reason to do that. And then it says certification in CPR, BL, BLS, I don't even know what that is.
Basic Life Support.
Basic Life Support, okay, and ACLS.
Advanced Cardiac Life Support.
Boy, right on, Scott, good. Lead and TB testing. That all sounded right to you, Scott? Okay, so, we need to accept this position description for a public health nurse for Carroll County.
I'll make a motion that we approve and or accept the updated position description for the public health nurse for Carroll County.
Second, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Now, this thing we have here, Beth, it says about Carroll County, well, it's Carroll County Economic Development. Delphi Redevelopment Commission, we're supposed to have a joint meeting with them, are we, or...
This, I just read that. It was just to tell you that you have, you are invited to a meeting on there.
Invited.
And then you need to, um, respond by November the third to the EDC office.
November tenth.
Yeah, this is for the Delphi Redevelopment Commission, but this is... Right.
It's a Monday. Are you interested in being at that meeting?
Oh, potentially, I mean, it's an overlap, um...
Where are we overlapping?
Well, that's what you're gonna find out.
Ah. Okay. I, potentially, I'm gonna save that date back. Might very well show up. Why, they want to count for cookies or what? You know, I wanna make sure I've got a cookie there if I'm going.
You know. It just says RSV by November third. I think they just wanted it counted to be.
Okay. What do we have yet to do, Beth?
Um, the chairman. Does you have a drainage board meeting?
Yeah, I know. Yes.
I do have one question.
Sure.
Did you table the, um, approval of the right to farm ordinance at your last meeting? Were you going to put this back on the agenda for discussion?
Yes, we just talked about that.
Yeah, it's going on the next meeting.
Okay.
We're just running long.
No, no worries, I just was, wanted to be sure I kept up with it.
Okay. That's for the right to farm? Okay.
So, that, that would be called the second reading?
Pardon me?
That would be called the second reading, right?
Second reading, yes.
That's all it needs then, right?
And, and you can, you can adopt it or...
Adopt it.
Okay.
Anything else? I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, and I will second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you. We will be going to our drainage board meeting next.
Bob, I go run and get a pop real quick.
Beth, I think we need to put on, I'm sorry.